I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the role?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Harple?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Potemzary?
Here.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Here.
Councilmember Gustad?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Before we move on to citizen comments on the agenda-related items, we do have some amendments to our boards and commissions. We did receive some applicants, so I'd like to read those now. For the Board of Review, we have T. Uptatziadis as an alternate and Ed. Cornyn-Skudts. I apologize. Also for the Board of Review. And Dale Picard for the Airport Authority. So those three applicants have been added to the agenda for those boards and commissions. So at this time, would you like to take any citizen comments on tonight's agenda? Are there anybody, is there anyone in attendance who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Sign off, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the Consent Agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine manners. Carried to approval of Consent Agenda, any member of council may have an item from the Consent Agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent Agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Approval of Payroll, Cash Balances Report, and Notification Regarding Next Work Session. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion. The council will take action to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Harple, support by Councilmember Cody, to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Sign off, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of allowing City Manager Mitchell D. Deich to join the Michigan Employees Retirement System, otherwise known as MERS, a non-union defined benefit retirement plan. City Council and City Manager Mitchell D. Deich approved a revised employment agreement on September 16, 2013. Included in this employment agreement was a provision that allowed Mitch to join the MERS Non-Unified Defined Benefit Plan, subject to confirmation by MERS. MERS has confirmed that Mitch is eligible to join the Non-Unified Benefit Plan. A supplemental evaluation was prepared and provided to City Council. Mitch will be 100% responsible for the purchase of all edible years of service. Is there a motion by council to approve City Manager to join the Michigan Employees Retirement System?
I'll make a motion. The council will take action to approve the City Manager Mitchell D. Deich to join the Michigan Employees Retirement System, City of Manistee Non-Unified Benefit Plan in accordance to the terms in the City of Manistee, Mitchell D. Deich Employment Agreement.
Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Harple, support by Mayor Potemzary, to approve Mitch Deich's joining the Michigan Unified Retirement System. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make declare that it's not going to cost the city a penny. The city manager is buying into it with his own funds.
Thank you.
Are you buying additionally yours, considering that you're going to pay us?
Any other concerns or comments? Sign off, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Airport Authority, Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Non-Monterized Transportation Committee, Tree Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement on the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Airport Authority. There's one vacancy, two-year term ending 11/30/15. This is the city's nomination to the County Airport Authority. It's a mayoral appointment. We have one applicant, Dale Picard. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dale Picard to the Airport Authority. I have a motion in a second to appoint Dale Picard to the Airport Authority for a two-year term ending 11/30/15. Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Board of Review. One regular member term ending 12/31/16 and two alternate members ending 12/31/14 and 12/31/16. This is a council appointment. Applicant shall be taxpaying electors of the city who are owners of property, assess their taxes in the city, and at the time of their appointment are neither elected nor appointed officials of the city. We have two applicants for the Board of Review. We have one for the regular members and one for an alternate. One for the regular member, we have one applicant, which is Ed. Criscuits. A lot to go with that. And this is a council appointment.
I'll make a motion. The council will appoint T. E. Taxiadis to the regular member as a regular member term ending 12/31/16. You want an alternate?
Yes.
I'll support that.
As an alternate?
Yes, okay, as an alternate.
We have a motion in a second to appoint T. Uptatziadis as the alternate member on the Board of Review. One year or two?
Sixteen.
The term ending 12/31/16. Michelle, can you please take?
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Are there any other appointments for the Board of Review?
We have none.
It's a council appointment. Is there a nomination?
I'll make a nomination to support Ed. Criscuits on the Board of Review. Our support.
Have a motion to support to appoint Ed. Criscuits to Board of Review. I apologize. Can you please take the role, Michelle?
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Compensation Commission. There's one vacancy, a five-year term ending 9/30/18. It's a mayoral appointment. I'd like to appoint Donna Prozdenjewinski of 17 McGill Street to the Compensation Commission.
Just a second.
Somebody to support.
I'll support Mark.
Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
And Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Downtown Development Authority, there's one vacancy for a resident member. There was no applicants. Historic District Commission, on expired term ending 2/20/15. This is a council appointment. No applicants received. Non-Monterized Transportation Committee, there are two unexpired terms ending 3/31/13 and 3/31/15. This is a mayoral appointment. There were no applicants. Tree Commission, there are three vacancies, three-year terms ending 12/31/16. This is a mayoral appointment. We do have two applicants, Susan Burge at 417 Second Street and Pat Sagala of 811 Oak Street. I'd like to appoint Susan Burge of 417 Second Street to one of the vacancies. Michelle, can you please take the role?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And I'd like to appoint Pat Sagala of 811 Oak Street to another vacancy to the Tree Commission.
I'll support her.
Support of Mayor Potemzary. Can you please take the role?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harple?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Potemzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlitt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. That's it. I'd like to have Michelle appoint or advertise for the remaining vacancies. We'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A rather part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Evelyn Split, who were part in activities of the 211 Action Team, and Mr. Todd Howland, who were part in activities of Republic Services.
You don't see Mr. Howland here, so we may need to pre-schedule Republicans for Republic Services.
I guess we'll hear from Ms. Evelyn Split?
Good evening. I am Evelyn Split, right president of 211 here in Nansie County. And tonight, I'll be providing you with an update on our progress and also talk about some of the projects that we have planned. Please take a look at the mass in your packet. They start on page two. This will give you an update on how people are doing nationally and statewide. In January of 2012, the nation had a little over 87% of 211 coverage. And as of February 2013, 211 now serves over 283 million Americans, over 90.6% of the entire population, covering all 50 states, plus Washington, D.C., and Puerto Rico. Thirty-nine states, including D.C. and Puerto Rico, enjoy 100% coverage. So we are making profits. On the next page, you'll see the first engine in Mass happened in 2012. We were at 94% overall coverage. And then in mid-2013, on the next page, the northwest expansion of D.C. giving us 98% coverage across the state. Here in Manistee County, we continue our efforts to promote 211 and connect people in need to people with solutions. Some of the highlights of this past year included interactive workshops in collaboration with the Regional Call Center, visitations of local food pantries, and our largest presentation that we've ever given for over 400 Little River Band of Audra Indian elders during their annual conference in November. The Action Team also coordinated the first-ever 211 community-wide fundraiser, helping to ram self-guitar ballroom. Numerous groups collaborated on that project and made the event an overwhelming success. In addition to the many local residents supporting the 2117, we had guests from Fab City, South Haven, and all across the state. Plus, we had two groups come from Illinois and a lovely couple came from Kentucky. Beyond the fundraising aspect of that event, we had opportunities to promote 211, answer questions about the system and the benefits, and share some information about Manistee and what it's like to live here and grow here. 211 also participated in emergency management exercises, including a web emergency operations center workshop, and we also participated in the City Dam Failure Exercise. I'd like to draw your attention now to the front page, which is our 211 dashboard report. This is kind of a summary. You'll see that the breakdown of requests at the top five, right at the top, housing and utility assistance is consistently the number-one request that we get here in Manistee County. And that is consistent across the state. We have received a total of 902 requests for the past 11 months with 120 unmet needs. The call center now has the capacity to extract the number of gifts received on the website from Manistee County, service agencies, and the resources. And we anticipate being able to produce more detailed reports about those websites in the near future. I also included a calendar of events that we were involved in for 2012 and some additional highlights of the past year. We've replaced our annual lunch meeting in October, which several of you have attended in the past, with the National 211 Day, as noted in the Project Section. This event will take place February 11 for 211 at the Nansie IS Week and that will correspond with the national celebration. So we will send out invitations, individual invitations for that event. The 211 Action Team also invites city council members and staff to participate in our interactive workshops. This is a hands-on opportunity to learn more about 211 and the benefits. And it is possible for us to move those workshops around to various locations throughout the county to accommodate agencies and their staff members, like the City of Manistee, and make it easier for everyone to participate. So we can bring the workshop to you at your convenience. A copy of the budget is also included in the packet. And we work very hard to keep the budget lean, simple, and on target for this countywide program that has the capacity to touch nearly 25,000 residents. We want to thank the City of Manistee for their continued support for all years and partnership that we've grown. Are there any questions this evening?
No, I just appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of 211. It really is a needed service in the area. And I believe as more people realize that that service is out there, that it will be utilized a lot more.
We always have to work on community awareness. This is an ongoing process.
It surprises me how few people know about 211 despite how long you've been in the community and...
The regional call centers in Michigan, and they still have people that do not know that 211 exists. And they've been in operation for approximately years. So it's just ongoing.
It's a great, a great thing for our community to have. And I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done to promote it and serve us.
Looking at your, looking at your budget, you really operate on a tight budget, too.
We do.
I guess. Hand it over.
And the funding has changed through the years. Since we got startup funds for the first three years, and then we had some guests that he had to fill, and he had to allow to do the beauty. And like I said, we hosted our first funding. I think that was very successful.
And are you going to be doing another murder mystery?
Probably next year. We do anticipate it to be an annual event, because we had so much response from it. We sold out tickets, and then we have a bug in the act.
It was a wonderful event. I attended that.
Lot of fun.
Yeah, it was fun for us, too. It really was. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Since Mr. Howland's not here, we'll move on to your concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council do not be publicly read. Is there anybody, any attendants who would like to comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Jill Warner. I live in Illinois. And I have some severe issues. I'm sure if I get off here, I apologize. I'm trying to get off my hitch. And I apologize for not coming sooner than I could. And so now I'm trying, this is longer than I thought, but I'm going to try to shorten it. I'm reading this rather than having to refer to those. Forty-five years ago, I put this to home on Long Street. It had a hedge alongside it, which was nice because instead of the old house, which is now over 100 years old, sitting there alone, it had a hedge. It must have been there at least 60 years, actually. The first few years, I used to hand him. And when my son was old enough, he took over and we've trimmed ever since. He took such pride in doing a good job. He spent many hours in it, and I spent many dollars for her less. It became lovely and was a part of our lives, but also the neighbors. In all the years, I never heard one complaint. I've heard many, many compliments about how pretty it was, how much it did for the house. I thank them and say, "I feel so true." Through the years, I did a lot to improve the house. I tried to keep the yard healthy. It was happy living. Now, I'm ashamed to call it my home, because the narrow edge that was left along the alley has chopped sticks. The edge that faces Long Street is now sticks for the whole way. It is not only looks terrible, but it has dropped the value of my couch. John Honrile was my neighbor. Soon after I moved in, he told me that the city had a policy, they would never cut or remove anything that was growing on a property owner's lot unless they were first notified of the problem that he had to be paying here. After Mr. Cop retired and Mr. Garber became director, things continued the same way. Jack would legally stop and tell the people, but sometimes it was my error. Jack and I named Golda friends of mine, and with his businesses, Home and Rambletons, I would be surprised that he owned more property at one time than anyone else ever has. Several years ago, he said that young fellow referring to Mr. Garber knows his city and was hard to neglect his best for the city and property owners, too. And if there ever is a property, problem, you are notified rightly. Then I heard Mr. Garber was leaving. I wondered what employee would replace him. But then there was also Mr. McCool who needed his job. First, he was then a director, and later director. He was not like previous directors to follow a city policy that had been used for years and years. He must have decided he didn't have to, and he would do what he wanted, because that is what he has done. Sometimes things happen in our lives we haven't been controlled. I had major surgery and experiment to do a Ben and Anarbers, those recuperating from that. Before my son could trim the hedge, he injured his arm and crushed it pretty badly. He was unable to work for a while. And even though it was fast living, it wasn't like using a hedge trim. And the hedge had new growth on it. It didn't work with, but it didn't interfere with anything. The week before, Monday, September 23, my son and I would talk. He said he was going to trim the hedge down here. I was concerned that he might injure his arm, so I asked him that he wait another two weeks or a few years. I also said, "If the city thinks it needs to be trimmed, we should go here for him." Was I happy when I had done that, because nothing would have saved my hedge? The next day, my son was working, and he saw Mr. McCool at a city job. He asked him why he hadn't notified me if there was a problem. In an arrogant way, his answer was that he had to deal with that hedge every day he drove to work when he went down the alley. If it irritated him, he could have driven in from the west end of the alley. He's never seen it. But anyway, with his new position, he was thinking of getting kind of a special deal or something. And apparently, it was to butcher my hedge because of the answer he gave my son in what he did. He brought workers with chainsaws and carted them with butcher and removed most of the hedge. That is a part of my life, more than I realized until it was gone. It was priceless to you. You have no more right to destroy my hedge than I have to destroy something at any of you council members' homes. On Monday, September 23, I learned with shock through the first. When I went outdoors and saw where it was left to my hedge, my body started shaking, and I seemed to lose my strength and felt like I was going to fail. I got back into the house, didn't leave for a week. All week, I sat in my chair and prayed to God to heal my body, because I didn't think I was going to live. On Saturday evening, I started feeling better, but my body remained exhausted. I am proud of getting my strength back. I doubt that my body will ever fully recover. But I am thankful for every day, and especially the better days, when I feel I am able to be more like I used to be. I did not tell you this specifically, but only what I had had to endure because of Mr. McCool and hopefully prevented it from happening to anyone else. At a meeting, I saw one of the city commissioners. We attended, and he was reporting of an empty dock. He said, "An empty alley, empty tree." It seems like it was going to tell the truth because of said it was butchered, not trimmed. I want to thank Mr. Byd for taking time from his busy schedule to come to my home and spend time with me, and also this council for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. So anyone else who would like to comment?
Hi, I'm Patrick K. I'm at 438 Third Street here in Manistee. I just want to come and formally introduce myself. I'm the new director for Manistee Main Street Downtown Development Authority. I'm a student here from Ohio, previously from, that from Maryland, and then also from South Carolina, which I'm originally from. But if you guys have any questions or have any concerns at all, I hope you will direct it towards me. Also, I hope that between now and, I guess, within the next year or within the next few months, if possible, I'd like to be able to meet with each one of you. I'll have to take out lunch or dinner, something like that, and get to know you and help you to show your vision for the downtown and how it will better serve you. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here, get your questions.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sign off, we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Finance director?
Finance Director.
Councilmember Cody?
Nothing.
Sorry, wait. City assessor?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak briefly. I've been working since September to find members for the Board of Review, which you appointed tonight. And I was thankful to find them. The problem is, I've not had a lot of success recruiting Board of Review members this last six months. And I would like the community and the council to help me with that perhaps. We have one alternate position left. I just wanted to speak briefly about what the time commitment is for the Board of Review. It is a paid position, although you can't pay a Board of Review member enough to be on the Board of Review to care of appeals. But it's generally the training the city pays for us in January, February. There's a meeting usually two days in March and two half-days in March, a half a day in July, and a half a day in December. So I'm grateful and thankful that we have... So I'm grateful and thankful that we have a full complement for the Board of Review beginning next March because if not for the Board of Review, none of us would need to be here. Because you have to have a fully functioning Board of Review, sign the tax rule, and order the taxes. So it's a crucial, they're crucial positions for the City of Manistee and Manistee. So I just wanted to mention that. The other thing is, there was recently a law passed, I believe it was mid-November, that allows disabled veterans 100% exemption from property taxes if they meet certain criteria. They could, if one of three things, one of three criteria they have to meet, they either have to be declared unemployable by the VA or 100% disabled by the VA, or get a certificate that allows them and the VA pays for to have home remodeling to accommodate disability. You have to meet one of those three conditions as well as be living in the home as a personal resident. So, and the reason I'm mentioning this is because it happens so fast. And this is the first time in about 38 years I've seen this. It's a retroactive exemption. If a veteran does qualify for this, their opportunity to do it is by next Tuesday, which is the December Board of Review. Now, it appears that the veterans are fairly well-informed. I've been talking to Karen Corleto, who is Jim Strangum, veteran counselor. She's great. She's been helping us through the process of determination. I've had two applicants so far. And I just wanted to mention this so that if there are any veterans out there who think they may be eligible, they need to file the affidavit, make an appointment, come in, file the affidavit, or see Karen Corleto at the county court hub. She's got the information because after next Tuesday, the way it stands now, well, it changes every day because I get stuff from the state every day. But as it stands now, it appears that the last opportunity for veterans will be next Tuesday at the December Board of Review because the December Board of Review will be the party that will be deciding this. But in 2013, that's where you're at. And in 2014, the veteran will have until next March. And believe it or not, that was a short story.
That's 100% disability, right?
Right, 100%. Right. And I guess the VA has a very odd way of doing math, but you won't question that.
I understand.
So call my office if there's veterans out there with questions. It's 398-2802. And I just want to thank you for the time.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Councilmember Cody. Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Councilmember Harple?
Only thing, let's have a good time at the Sleigh Bell Parade next Saturday.
Yeah.
Hear this whole weekend. It's gonna be a nice weekend. That's all.
Councilmember Gudsky? Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Actually, I have two things. I spoke with someone from the Disabled American Veterans Group here in Manistee. They were trying to find someplace where they could put their van so they could get more exposure. They are desperately in need of volunteer drivers. So if anyone in the audience or in the community can help out in some way, please contact them. I can get the information to you if you need to. You can call me at 510-3691. And then the other thing was, please, everyone, enjoy Sleigh Bell. It begins tomorrow evening with the Sleigh Bell and, let's see, Prince and Princess pageant. And will continue through Sunday. And make sure that you welcome all visitors.
I have one question for the city manager. Mrs. Waterman, whatever happened with the hedge?
Yeah, this last year, we went through all of the alleyways in the City of Manistee and cleaned them up. Some hedges were, some trimming was done throughout the city of hedges. A lot of other things, there were hot holes were eliminated. They weren't hot holes because it's gravel. It's more gravel was brought in, they were graded, they were cleaned up. First time, I think it's been done, I won't say since I've been here, but it's not a regular occurrence when we go in there. So we made a concentrated effort to go in there. When I received the phone call from Mrs. Waterman, the hedges had already been trimmed, I was able to look at them via the photographs that she had provided. But the city staff went in there and determined that the hedges were encroaching upon the right-of-way and they were trimmed.
And I'd like to add to that. At the same, shortly thereafter, they went down our alleyway and I lost over 60 feet of, all the way to the trunk on my seaters because it's necessary for the vehicles to get through.
Right.
And I lost a lot of privacy that way. But it's what was needed to be done.
Prior to you coming on, Council, Councilmember Whitlock, Mrs. Waterman, I met her at her home. She was very, very gracious to allow me to come into her home, spend some time with her. I don't remember when it was. I scanned four, five, maybe six photographs and distributed those to city council. Is that probably in October, ma'am? So roughly in October-ish, so council would have been aware of the situation that occurred. I wrote four of those on the city council. No, it's okay, ma'am. I think there is a disagreement as to the need for the trimming compared to how the trimming was done.
Are we going to do anything for her? I mean, with that hedge?
I'm not sure there's much that can be done right now with that hedge. I think that the main thing is to see what, how it looks in the springtime. I'm not sure that you could prob, and I don't know, I'm not an arborist, not a permaculture, so I don't know what can be done about that. But we are aware of the concerns that Mrs. Waterman issued. She had some concerns about our crab tree out front and asked us to not trim the crab tree so her son could do so. So I ensured that we passed that along to the Department of Public Works so we didn't work on any of the crab trees. And that, the crab tree actually kind of has a canopy over the sidewalk, which would be running north and south.
We just keep, keep it updated in the spring, take a look at it again, see how it's progressing for her?
I have a follow-up question to that. And it's relevant to the concern that, notice prior to doing some of those things, maybe some of that could have mitigated by a knock on the door and just letting people know what the plans were for that. I'd hate to see it happen again, and I'm really sorry that it did happen, Mrs. Waterman. But the truth is, maybe that's a lesson that we could learn is to do a better job of some advanced notice in that respect.
That takes me in power, though. It really, it really does. When you consider the number of alleyways in the city?
I think it's a catch, I mean, I won't say it's a catch 22. But it's a situation where you know, common sense has to be taken. You know that there's going to be many homes on the alley where really nothing is going to occur there. But those occasional ones where we know that we're going to be doing some significant trimming, you know, just the better part of, the better part of valor is to just knock on the door or to let somebody know that. And Mr. McCullough and I have had that conversation.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we put an ad in the paper?
That's what I would suggest.
We surely can, we surely can.
And it's gonna, we're gonna, or put it out there, so.
Unless everybody gets the newspaper, too. I mean, we're not going to reach everybody in every gash, we're knocking on doors or hanging door hangers. The, what my, my thought was is if we can mitigate some of these problems prior to their, you know, becoming an issue, the same [inaudible] to do that.
Ten dollars tomorrow.
Thank you.
And we will definitely go back there in the spring and take a look at it. Let's say I have nothing.
Nothing else. The only thing I have is I wish everybody a safe travels for this weekend during Sleigh Bell Festival. And I hope everyone comes out and enjoys all the activities. But then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
You made that motion?
Support. Pageant?
Essentially...